Test loading.
Eric.
Boom. All right, time's up. Please join me in the flag sleeve. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion and approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Do you have a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, well, we left off last week.
Approve our commission for this consideration of opening a road on Forty-Fifth and Unique. So, Eric?
All right, um, a couple things here for you. We have a aerial footage, and I'll start it, video here in a minute. And then on the other side is the actual map of the area as well. Lor, do you have any comments on the gravel road or anything going, or the drive going down to that house or not?
What we thought from here?
On up?
On up here, this, at one time, this used to be a road going here.
Okay.
This here has not been officially closed.
So it's all?
But this is now a driveway, which I believe that we do need to close this because now it is a driveway. It is a private driveway.
So, and I'm assuming the person on this, on both sides of the driveway?
Right, yes.
Okay.
So, this, I believe, we need to close this because this is now a private drive.
So what are we looking at down here?
This here has been closed.
Okay, this is the one?
This is the one that was closed in eighteen forty-nine.
Okay.
So, this is what they're asking to be reopened this year. And then that's Eric's say.
Show you here, you're, from fence line to fence lines, roughly forty, forty, forty-two feet. Um, and then basically where you see the gravel, that's about twelve foot. And I do apologize for the video when we were converting it. It's a little bit, um, bumpy.
A little bit of groundwork there.
About thirteen hundred foot long is what the, from Forty-Fifth and Unique down to the...
To the end of the road?
Yeah.
Right there would show.
The private road.
It would show the power lines on private property?
They're on the backside of that.
That fence.
That fence. I, I don't.
Right.
Survey-wise, I don't know what that.
But it would appear that way.
It would appear that way, yes.
They're on the private side of the fence.
Yeah.
I don't know what that means either.
Yeah. But there is, the power poles and the power line. There's that drive Lor was talking about.
Okay.
Goes right on down here to the gate, makes a little S right there and goes to that gate, so.
If we have, uh, if, if we open it, do we have room for a turnaround area?
There's your, I mean...
So I can assume both north and south, there's a little room?
I would think we could get turned around there if you choose to open it. Um, I don't...
There's the power line, goes right straight on through, and then, then?
Yeah, I'm not sure whose that is, or...
Okay.
Did you say it goes on through to the next neighbor? Is that correct?
Yes, they have, they have more come to the neighbor to the east of us, and that's where that power line goes to.
Okay.
May I make a comment about the road you're talking about closing? That is a person's property, Lord. You can't close a person's private driveway.
That's the only way you can get to his property.
That's not what she meant. She meant...
No, no, it, you can close the road, but it's their personal driveway.
Right, but that was what I was confused about.
No, that's a...
Right, right. We're not closing their driveway. We would be closing it as a...
They own, they own both sides of the property, own it, it's a...
It's their private driveway.
It's their private driveway. You don't have any more than one landowner on that, on that driveway.
I have a question for Justin. It's obvious this road's thirteen hundred feet. There won't be some president here of what might come. If we open this road, we could get fifty more next week.
You absolutely could, yeah. No, I mean...
But we hope not, but I know some people out in that area.
That would be our concern.
It won't, but it'd be our concern. Yes, it will. We open fifty more driveways to a public road, it is our concern.
Well, this is, this is...
I mean, is this, so this was a, this is a, was once a county road closed.
Eighteen forty-something, yeah.
And so now they're asking it to be reopened? So the, to reopen a road legally, you have to go through the same process as closing a road.
And they did. They got, they got all the landowners to sign off.
They've done that.
So they've got everything signed off and published and all that good stuff? So, Kendall's shaking her head, yes?
I know this road's been talked about for a number of years.
Okay. I have no, I get to say this, I have no dog of the fight.
I just wanted your opinion of, what my opinion of, I mean, I, Commissioner, that's on you guys. That's why you get elected.
Hey, you know, it might be a trade-off, closing, closing driveway and opening the road.
It's your area.
My area? Well, you know, like I said, they've been talking about it for a number of years, wanted to, because the argument was that it was open. And we did maintain it, you know, of course, that's, that doesn't really mean anything because we maintained a lot of, a lot of things that, that wasn't on our list to maintain.
Well, and again, it's your area. If that's the direction you want to go, I'll support your decision.
Well...
I'm very concerned with us being overwhelmed with more requests. It's gonna happen. I know three guys waiting to see what's hap-
Well, I think it's gonna happen to you anyway.
Wait, well, I know some that...
A lot of people are very upset.
That's true. But there's others that won't come forward, and there's some that will, so...
But I don't think that should be a burden on what we're requesting.
And it's not a burden, but it's a burden to us on our consideration because what we do for you, we should do for the next guy.
Not necessarily.
Well, not necessarily, but maybe.
No, you're, you're crossing the line.
The other, the other part of that is, we may want to discuss a little bit is, you can't, you can't deny access to an individual's property.
Right.
That's right, and that's what you're doing.
Right.
And the other, the other, the other part of that, I, I don't know if there's ever been a agreement between the landowners to even use that as an access road, you know? That's something that would be in a civil court, not a county court.
Well, we're friends, it's good neighbors, what we do.
All right, I'm, I'm sure you have been.
Yeah, on that second part, I don't think anyone could deny them access to their driveway.
No.
So...
And we have, we have two different landowners that have, the three different, is it three?
Yes.
Three different landowners that want, need access to that property. Well, I'm gonna, I wanna support it, so I'll make a motion to, to allow the opening of that thirteen hundred...
Thirteen, it's around thirteen hundred feet.
Thirteen hundred feet of...
Twelve ninety-three feet, yeah.
Twelve ninety-three, uh, opening that road back up. And hopefully we don't get a flood. Of course, this is a short, this is a short distance, you know? We've, we've done this before, and we've denied them before. I know that, I know of one that we, we said was closed, and it wasn't closed. Because we're still trying to get our maps done, and that's been quite a process, two years' worth of process going through this, going through this. So, I'll make that motion, and looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Sure. Yeah, okay, okay, gotcha. Thank you, Kendall. Okay, I request permission to, to sign the application for permanent road, road opening?
I second that.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Eric.
One more. Okay, I move that we approve a resolution eighteen dash twenty-one, a resolution opening the road in Franklin Township, Burbank County, Kansas. And this is at Forty-Fifth and Unique.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. There we go.
Yeah, he's chasing a cow.
Hey, like I said, it's money on the hood. Thank you. Take a short break.
Good fishes make good cows.
What's that?
Good fishes make good cows.
Good cow, good cow, I can say.
I think there may be some dogs involved with this too, so I'm not positive, but. Had a bird dog.
I had a bird dog get loose yesterday, headed right to your place.
Really?
I caught her about RD's mom.
Okay, sure, sure. I got a couple other things I need to go over here.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Mm-hmm. I pushed it right into my fence, and the fence went with it.
Okay.
Am I supposed to fix the fence and take the trees out of the fence after you pushed it in?
We'll come back, and if you'll give me the location, I'll send it back out. Okay, no problem. We'll, we'll get it taken care of.
Okay.
All right?
All right. I, I just think you've...
Yep, yep, you're welcome.
Anchor fee.
Yep, I understand.
Yeah.
So...
I do have a concern on Unique Road from Thirty-Fifth to Forty-Fifth.
Okay.
There are two low areas that water runs over the road all the time.
Okay.
To me, you need to put a culvert in those two areas.
Crossroad two, okay.
And bring that road up because it's not, it's a mess.
You do that, well, I want mine to do.
We'll look and see.
Well, it's been that way for years, and there's, is there spring or something there?
Unique Road?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mine too. It's, it's just that, that, a lot of times, and I'm sure if we look into this, is the ditching is not where it needs to be to get that water to run where it's supposed to run.
Well, it's such a low area, there's no way you can have a ditch there anyway.
Well, and also, is it pretty much solid rock up there as well?
I don't know. It creates a ditch going across there all the time. I'm not a surveyor. I don't know anything about that.
But we'll look at it and see what we can do.
They call it, they call it Lime Ridge from the region.
Yep, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of lies.
Yeah.
And they call it Lime Creek from the region.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, we always thought we were on a rock front.
Yeah, yeah.
The antipode cut off, so the water came down.
It did, it did, and years and years, and there was not a way to get through this. Wet weather.
Not many things, a fifteen ninety, whatever.
I'm sure you can get over it, I mean, we have their, their property in Unique.
See, never one's small.
So you don't wanna talk about that.
You know where you're at, Betty Brad Bird?
Yeah, yeah.
Betty Brad Bird, down there on the Range Road, that's the way it last rode.
Oh, yeah, I seen that in the paper.
Oh, yeah.
She been kinda ill for a while, hasn't she? Good neighbors.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay.
All right, all right, we'll see ya.
Yeah. Better go back to work.
Yeah.
Back to work. Go chase some cows, right?
Take care.
Take care.
Eric?
Yes?
Soon as Jim gets back, we'll talk about, and I can talk about one. I had a request for, hey, check this out, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that this has been, uh, talked about quite often. The road just south of Unique, what is it? Starts with another U. Think of it here in a minute. Anyway, just, just south of me, quarter mile, goes to a private residence up there, and I, and I'm pretty sure that it's never been cleared. So... What's that road up above Jesse's name, you know? Come on, here, you, you was raised there, you know what that is.
I don't know.
Didn't have a name back then.
It was last I knew, it was rural route one, East Town, Kansas.
Well, you been gone for a couple of years now. I know, but it is, I got it right here.
How's your dad, Eric?
Good one.
Still spraying them weeds?
Yep, yep, he's out right now, working.
Which state?
Uh, he's in Kansas, out around Wichita right now.
That's not bad.
Yeah.
I don't think he'll ever get tired chasing that dollar.
Okay, so it is...
I don't think he'll ever get tired.
Check it out. It is Unique.
Unique, okay. I'll check it out.
Yeah, Unique.
Going, going, it's going west, off of Ninety.
All right.
All right.
All right, a couple of quick things. No permits today. Again, last week, Mother Nature got us again with some heavy rains, um, several washouts. Greater operators are back, pulling gravel back out of the ditches and working on the roads, and we were able to haul some gravel to them middle, latter part of the week. We did experience a couple sinkholes, one Seventy-Fifth, north of Fifty-four. Couldn't find anything in there that would've caused it, for sure. Fiber did go through there, but it was about four or five foot off of their line, so I'm, I'm wondering, maybe when they went through there, if they hooked a big rock or something? I, I have no clue, no way of knowing, but we were able to knock everything in and compact it back, so that one's, um, taken care of. And then Xavier, three quarters of a mile east of Two Hundred Fifteen, there's a little bit of a bridge on the southeast corner. We had a hole show up there, and we were filling it with flowable fill and then grappled over it, so got those taken care of. Blast, I know you asked last meeting, and the blast is scheduled for the thirteenth of July at, at Blake. And then we're, we will be crushing it at Beth. Asphalting, we're back to asphalting today. Back down Jefferson Highway or Two Hundred and, what is it, Fifty-Fifth or Fiftieth or somewhere.
Fifty, then turns into Two Forty-Fifth.
Fifth, or somewhere, yeah, yeah, so...
Right there at Fern, I think.
Right. Just to let you know, asphalt oil did go up forty dollars a ton, so...
Forty dollars, ten more?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, so I'm just, I was notified latter part of the week, so...
Because the oil price is up to seventy-six dollars.
Yeah.
A barrel.
Yeah.
That's not surprising.
Right. Beans, we'll be starting to work on getting the berms put around this week, and then around C and D as well.
Oh, they come to town to look at our, our proposed location?
Right, but that'll be the latter part of July before, um, I can't remember, Sam, Samuel, maybe?
Yeah.
Before he can get here.
You might have a lot of opportunity of that land we bought, that twelve acres.
Okay.
Because I know when I visit with one gentleman, his concern was moving it off the solid waste somewhere, and we got twelve acres over there, it's never been touched, so...
Okay, perfect.
Might be a perfect place for...
Absolutely.
And that's where they were storing them before.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's where they started.
Okay.
Under a previous owner.
Okay.
Now, um...
I'll let you know when, in that way, since you know where the location and everything.
Good.
We can...
Thank you.
Get that. Um, going, KDOT's Off-System Road Bridge Program for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, they're calling for projects on that. It's gotta be turned in by the end of July, so, um, I've had some conversations with Dave Beach, with Schwab Eaton, does that sound right? And getting the list that we can bring to you and see if there's any that you want to, uh, apply for, see if we can get it.
Somewhere in the future, we need to move forward with the big metal bridge around Two Fifty.
Right.
Of, uh, need to clean it up and paint it or sandblast it. I know at one time Jeff Fisher had mentioned some new product out there that could be applied to that lead-based paint and make the job a lot easier. I don't know what that is.
There is, there's, there's a product out there that will latch into the old product, and you won't, you won't have to, uh...
Sandblast.
Sandblast that thing, and, and I've seen it used before.
Yeah, because if you sandblast, you got to recover underneath that lead paint, and that's a lot of work, so, but that's something I hope when you get comfortable in the next few years. Morning, Cliff.
Morning.
And I've used it on, I've used it on galvanized tin before, too.
Okay.
All right.
I'll get that, get that list and, and get it, give you some options and see what, what we think there. And then windmills, same, same as us with the heavy rains and fixing roads and culverts and what have you, so... We all were kinda in the same boat just last week with the mountain rain, so, anything else for me?
I went out and, uh, run the, uh, roads all the way from, uh, Hallack County and...
That's kinda what that...
County line all the way up to Hundred Twenty-Fifth. Down to Soldier Road, and, you know, it's not a lot of major damage, but there was, you know, some damage, so I didn't really, anything down was concerning except for... Would you check out, uh, and I'm sure we've done this before, but, I mean, it's, it's something that, that, it's not on our map, but it's there. The Hundred and Twentieth and Unique going south, check to make sure that is closed. Because if it isn't closed, there's a bridge just, just off of the, off of that road that is dangerous. And it is an old metal bridge.
Okay.
An old metal corrugated metal bridge.
Okay. I will, uh, look into that.
Eric, this sixty-four twenty-two oil, what are you using that with?
That's our, that's our, we're out here at the plant.
At the plant?
Mm-hmm.
You hit that cow?
Kinda, kinda.
You just had to shoot it, did you?
She's in the, she's in the, she's in a pasture, just not my pasture. Yes. All right, anything else?
No, I don't have anything.
Good with that? Want to visit on it?
Oh.
We can visit.
I guess my memory's...
Okay.
We, I don't know.
Okay.
Just something a flag went up a little bit, that, it's probably, it seemed like we used to use AC-ten, but, but...
Six-ten's in there.
Use it before. Twenty-two, I think, I'm sure it is, so...
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elected official comments.
Yes, I do.
How you, Cliff?
Good.
Good to see you.
Better than that, you got your cow?
Yeah, like she's not in the road.
I had, uh, one of my neighbors quartered me at the fireworks union, says, you know, up around here, I've got six cows that I can't find.
That'd be a true statement up there.
All right.
I said, it'd be, it'd be hard, you got a true statement up there, not country.
Oh, it's wild up there, yeah.
We've other dog in the road, so...
Can become friends with the wild hogs up there.
Did you?
No, I said there, there's cows.
Oh, yeah, you know, Mr. Harris and I were riding around one time down in my area checking out, and he said, well, I don't know about the, whether they're wild hogs down here or not. So we were down south from me, and the river there, we come up out of the river, and there was a herd of, what, about twenty of them out there to the, to the west.
Yep, they was there.
Yeah.
And they rode up a field in a heartbeat.
Yeah.
You each receive budgets from Tri Valley and, I believe on your desk, uh, they weren't able to meet with you, but so they could provide an electronic way, and if you have questions, you can reach out to them. They could meet with you, but it was gonna be later than what, uh, what we used to meet.
I have it in here. I'll take it home with me.
Yeah, my, my case, I mean, that I bet Susan to do on all work, as your budget said, we, to do a five-year average of the increase.
Well...
What date, my phone did I keep? What date are we doing the budget workshop?
Thirteen.
Okay.
Next week, afternoon.
Yeah, I didn't go in there.
Of course, my goal, my goal is to optimize it.
You bet.
But I don't wanna hide it with the valuation going up.
You can't.
I want whoever, when it hits your mailbox, I want it the same or less than that last year. You guys did a good job last year, so I don't want that going up.
Well, you know, with the new, with the new legislation that, that's out there, you've got to have a public period if you're gonna raise, raise the budget any.
You have to stay neutral.
Yeah, it's gotta be, it's gotta be revenue neutral.
Yeah, and then neutral.
And then you have to, you have to have a public period.
Yeah.
So, all right. County councilor, do you have anything?
I do. Sorry, I was in fucking clothes. Uh, we received a petition to repeal, revoke the one cent citywide sales tax last week because of the holiday. I'll be meeting with Kendall on most likely Thursday, and, and the question itself looks like it's gonna be, it's gonna stand. We just gotta come up with the actual election numbers, and Kendall and I talked about that this morning. I'll talk about that again on Thursday to make sure we're both on the same page, and then we'll be getting the response back to the individual that submitted that, that petition. So, um, the second part is, we need to have the conversation. Rob is here, um, he can also discuss this, but we need a motion to allow for a signature on the feasibility study for the hospital Friday, myself, Commissioner O'Hare, and actually Rob is also in the room. We spent about three hours waiting on a document that did appear. We are now officially the county is the owner of the Mercy Hospital Building. I guess we should not call it that anymore, um, the Bourbon County Health Center.
Bourbon County Healthcare Facility.
Yeah, Health Center, Healthcare Facility. Shane Walker and his team will be getting involved with the facility out there fairly shortly. We do have, um, three, uh, new employees that we probably need to get a motion on that also this morning, that were out there, and we need, we need their expertise and leadership with that facility um, to make sure that we can keep it sustainable and operating and all those good things. So I need two motions, and then we need an executive session, um, for the acquisition of real property, probably fifteen minutes, the three commissioners, myself, Susan, and Rob.
I think it's, uh, important to note that those three employees will keep that hospital or the building up to joint commission standards.
Right.
And they're, which is very difficult to do.
Right, yeah, and they're, they have years and years, I mean, decades of experience.
Yeah.
And they've been in that building, I think, since it opened, so...
So the other thing that I'd kinda like to note too, and this is, is the contracts that are in place now, uh, they have to be honored?
Yes. We, the assumptions, we, we took the, uh, we assumed every single one of the contracts for, we, we, the, um, mowing, things of those natures, were actually until the end of the year. And some of them are month to month, but the ones that were a year or longer, those are things that we had to have to keep with the compliance, you know? Oxygen, line checks, um, sprinkler systems, fire suppression, doors, elevators, things like that, that we don't have anybody in-house that really can really handle that. So, um, I know that there's some additional money that might be requested by Shane Walker and the IT department, just to make sure that we can get everything working smoothly out there with the transitional technology. Outside of that, it's just basically turnkey. And we have, we have lots of, we have tenants too, that we assumed those leases also.
I did visit with one employee, they're very happy with meeting with Susan, so thank you.
Yep.
Uh, is one of those employees the supervisor of all of them, or who's the sup, who's the boss out there?
We can't say their names.
Yeah, we can't say their names.
But there is one.
Well, I mean, really, I mean, in big picture, it's just, the commission is the, is the boss.
Yeah, daily activities, or...
Yes, there is one.
Yeah, there is one, yeah, there is one.
I didn't know there's three equal, or one was...
Well, one is slightly, I mean, hierarchy, I mean, they're all, have a different job function, but there is a problem.
No one's just been designated as the lead.
Well, so that's, that's part of the problem. Um, we had one retire.
Right.
So he's on contract, and so I need permission to go out to, go out for a, another person to replace him.
And we probably need to go into executive session about that, just because...
Should we do the executive session before we do any of the motions?
One, the, the acquisition of real property does not have anything to do with... One, the, the acquisition of real property does not have anything to do with the Mercy Building, the Bourbon County Health.
Do we need one for identifiable personnel?
Cause we're gonna name names, I mean, even though, we're gonna name two employee, two county employees now, yeah, we need to go in for. An executive, I'd say for twenty minutes based off of what I think Susan's been asked for.
First off, we need to make a motion to make these county employees.
Well, I think they, the salary schedule, that's something Kendall will have to handle with the commission. I'm not. An expert on that area, but she, you know, there obviously, we have a whole new designation of structure and hierarchy. And administrative with that facility, so we need to.
Make a motion to retain the employees and then we can figure out the salary schedule by next week.
We also need to add an employee like ASAP.
But we can do that.
We had that con, I mean, that conversation I know has occurred internally, but we just didn't know if we were there yet, but if we, if he's already decided, that that employee's already decided that. They're actually gonna do that and they're gonna go ten ninety-nine, we probably need to talk about that now instead of two or three weeks from now.
Okay.
And Susan and I did talk about that last week, but we didn't, I didn't get to follow, cause our time with, uh, at the title company, we weren't able to follow up with Susan to. Make sure that that person actually made that decision. We were kinda hoping he wouldn't.
But, but he has.
Yeah, but he has, now, as of right now, he has, so. So we do need to go into executive session for fifteen minutes for non-elected identifiable employees that would take their privacy rights.
Okay.
Myself, the three commissioners and Susan. If Shane's here, is Shane in the back room? Probably Shane too, cause we're gonna need to talk about his department. I would've added that to the agenda if I'd known, I'm sorry.
What's that?
I would've added that to the agenda if I'd known, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Sorry, Mr. Roy.
So you can go into executive session to talk about two people?
No, actually, it's like.
So.
And you can do that. You can do one executive session and talk about four.
Cause it's all out of the same building department.
Oh, okay.
That's all the same area.
I'd make a motion to amend the agenda.
Here a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to go into executive session under. KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy.
Can we do a two-minute pause to go get Mr. Walker? Cause it's important that he's here.
Okay, go ahead.
Just a two-minute recess.
Just put a hold on the motion.
Let that, we can let that one die and I can say it all again.
I know you did. So, um, maybe I'll return a favor, I don't know. When it comes to that, I'll have to make my decision.
I understand, I understand, but that's on the resume, so.
Been talking about that for five years.
Oh, yeah, at least. With Cliff not being here, kinda put me on the spot, that road.
Yeah, my cow's fine and my pasture. I wish that the neighbor's shepherds were chasing his.
Yeah.
Shane is on his way over.
We talked about roads, I think there's one up on, uh, Andy Walker's place, or that south of me. It's a road in the middle of nowhere, just there.
Just there.
I'd make a motion to go into executive session under KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. Um, related to job function, um, for fifteen minutes. It'd be the three commissioners, uh, Shane Walker, Susan Bancroft and Justin Meeks. We will return here at nine. Looks like nine forty-nine.
Here a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
I make a motion to resume normal session with a few motions.
Second.
Second then.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, after our executive session, I asked for four separate motions. I can hand it over to you guys or I can go over one of them individually and hopefully I don't butcher them. Okay. First motion is I ask that the commission and the county take on the responsibility, employment of two existing employees out at the Bourbon County Health Center. Susan has those names. We can... Do you have the names of those two individuals?
Janice Baker and Justin Meeks.
So, we need to come up with names and job descriptions.
Mm-hmm.
And salary schedules.
Salary schedules. Right now, we want them employed until we get all that information.
All right.
But they're going to be county employees as of your motion if you approve it.
Okay.
I would make a motion as stated by Councilor Meeks.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
I asked to... I asked to make Shane Walker, our current IT director, the... I don't know what his job function title will be. We'll add another hat to his...
Lead.
Yeah, well, I gotta add another hat to his head. But whatever job title he wants with regards to the director of that facility, per se, I mean, he's the person that the... All the contacts will go through. I mean, right now legally, if there's any legal issues, Susan will have that contact. She's, you know, the paid... The checks and all that stuff will flow through Susan. But if there's any problems with the building itself, maintenance, IT, stuff like that, I asked the commission to make a motion to let Shane Walker be that director, another director position, I guess.
I would make a motion as stated by Councilor Meeks.
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
I'd ask that the commissioners give Susan the ability to post a job description for an opening for another maintenance slash technology person at that facility.
I make another motion as stated by Councilor Meeks.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That... That salary schedule on that new... Well, that replacement of an existing employee, I'll have... Just have Susan work with Kendall on that and then come back and maybe present that when that candidate is hired. I don't know. And give really another quick sidebar. Susan, I guess, and Shane could be the lead on the interviewing process and who that person is that gets hired. Unless Commissioner O'Hare wants to be involved, then you'd have to give him permission to do that.
I, you know, I have an IT background, but I don't want to be in that. We have qualified people could do that without my intervention.
Okay, just making sure. The... The fourth one and probably the biggest one of the morning would be to approve or allow for Commissioner Chairman O'Hare to sign the agreement concerning the feasibility study. So, one of the commissioners is going to have to...
I would make a motion that we sign the cooperative agreement with Noble Health.
Here, a second.
And the Chairman O'Hare can sign that.
Second.
Any... Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And before we go back into executive session, I just want to do another quick update on the tax... So, we'll probably be publishing next week. So, which that makes... It means that we're easily can have a sale by, you know, the end of August. So, I'll be working with Patty on that, on that issue.
Very good.
Well, I would make a motion to go into executive session. Hang on.
Acquisition of real property. I ask that Susan, Shane, and Rob and myself are in that one.
Under how long... How many minutes?
Three.
Three minutes? I'll go with three.
Oh, thirty. That's like three minutes. We're faster at it, we're not that fast.
I would...
It takes me three minutes, so Walker.
I would, uh... I would do twenty.
Okay.
Rob, Rob, Rob is...
He likes to talk.
I'm not used to hearing that.
I make a motion to go into executive session under KS A-75-4319-V6 for the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property. For that reason, for twenty minutes, it would include the three commissioners, Rob Harrington, Shane Walker, Justin Meeks, Susan Bancroft, and we will return here at, looks like nine ni... Or ten nineteen.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Well, I would make a motion to go into executive session.
Very good.
And the Chairman O'Hare can sign that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
And before we go back into executive session, I just wanted to do another quick update on the tax. So, we'll probably be publishing next week. So, which that makes... It means that we're easily can have a sale by, you know, the end of August. So, I'll be working with Patty on that, on that issue. Okay.
Very good.
Well, I would make a motion to go into executive session.
Very good.
And the Chairman O'Hare can sign that.
Second.
Okay, just making sure. The fourth one and probably the biggest one of the morning would be to approve or allow for Commissioner O'Hare to sign the agreement concerning the feasibility study. One of the commissioners is gonna have to...
I would make a motion that we sign the cooperative agreement with Noble Health.
Here, a second.
And the Chairman O'Hare can sign that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
And before we go back into executive session, I just wanted to do another quick update on the tax. So, we'll probably be publishing next week. So, which that makes... It means that we're easily can have a sale by, you know, the end of August. So, I'll be working with Patty on that, on that issue. Okay.
Very good.
Well, I would make a motion to go into executive session.
Very good.
And the Chairman O'Hare can sign that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
And before we go back into executive session, I just wanted to do another quick update on the tax. So, we'll probably be publishing next week. So, which that makes... It means that we're easily can have a sale by, you know, the end of August. So, I'll be working with Patty on that, on that issue. Okay.
Very good.
Well, I would make a motion to go into executive session.
Very good.
And the Chairman O'Hare can sign that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
And before we go back into executive session, I just wanted to do another quick update on the tax. So, we'll probably be publishing next week. So, which that makes... It means that we're easily can have a sale by, you know, the end of August. So, I'll be working with Patty on that, on that issue. Okay.
Very good.
Well, I would make a motion to go into executive session.
Very good.
And the Chairman O'Hare can sign that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
And before we go back into executive session, I just wanted to do another quick update on the tax. So, we'll probably be publishing next week. So, which that makes... It means that we're easily can have a sale by, you know, the end of August. So, I'll be working with Patty on that, on that issue. Okay.
Very good.
Well, I would make a motion to go into executive session.
Very good.
And the Chairman O'Hare can sign that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
And before we go back into executive session, I just wanted to do another quick update on the tax. So, we'll probably be publishing next week. So, which that makes... It means that we're easily can have a sale by, you know, the end of August. So, I'll be working with Patty on that, on that issue. Okay.
Very good.
Well, I would make a motion to go into executive session.
Very good.
And the Chairman O'Hare can sign that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I give the first motion. I may will give Clifton Beth permission to call Pitt State regarding the contract with Bourbon County.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next one is, I make a motion to give Rob Harrington and Susan Bancroft the ability to look into an issue with an MOU. An active MOU and come back to the commission next Tuesday with recommendations.
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Just wanted to clarify on something on that too, just to make sure you get a good record.
That MOU does deal with real property that is not owned by the county but is in processes. So, just wanted to clarify that to make sure everyone understands.
What did he mean by active? It's current? You're just revising it?
Possible revisions to it.
Yeah.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. I think I said it, didn't I? I think I said it, didn't I?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you done?
I got a new director sent to me.
Susan Bancroft, do you have anything on the finance side of this thing?
Just a reminder that we'll have our budget meeting next Tuesday in the afternoon. So, that's all I have. I think 1 o'clock is what we landed on, wasn't it?
Right.
After lunch.
After the commission meeting. Okay, public comment?
2022? Next Tuesday, 2021?
Commission comment?
I received a call from city manager Jeremy Fraser requesting that I be part of the HR interview process that he's gonna start next week. I need your permission to do that.
Make a motion to...
Do we need to make a motion or you have my permission?
One second.
Go ahead, Harvey.
Guys, I would... Just a quick banter about that. You know, obviously, we're looking at the possibility of a shared service on that. We don't necessarily have the agreement in writing yet. And the other issue is we're not 100% sure of the future landlord-tenant relationship with the city. And I think there's a big part of that potential HR director being a part of that shared service with...
I agree.
So, I mean, I don't know. If they're gonna... If they're hiring that quickly, well, there's... I think you're, in my opinion again, putting the cart before the horse, but we don't know how that would work if they're not here.
Well, I'd agree with that statement because...
I'm just talking. I'm just talking.
We have unknowns right now.
Right.
So, the, you know, local agreement, we couldn't pursue that until we...
Well, I don't... My understanding, Jeremy just wanted to be part of the interview process. I wasn't interviewing him for the county.
Okay.
Just as a...
Just as a...
So, this is a private citizen?
Just as the team, as a private citizen.
Well, you don't need a permission.
They're just...
You would need a permission then.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I was trying to clarify. Because you, as a private citizen, you can be a part of any interview team.
Yeah, I want to advise them.
Right. Just it's... Good, but you don't need a motion on that.
Okay.
All right. Good.
Good.
That's it for me.
I don't have anything. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Public comment?
I was just gonna say, so...
We did a public comment?
Public comments were limited. Was that your public comment?
That was my...
Oh, yeah? I'm a little disappointed, but okay.
Yeah. Where's our dissertation?
I could dissertate if you'd like. As long as you just don't fill us.
Okay.
Take... Mark...
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.